Thanks, Andrew. Good evening and welcome to the July 14th meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. I am joined with my colleagues, Ties Hickman and Kevin Roach, our interim Town Administrator, Mike Gallagher, and our Assistant TA Kelly King. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We usually start our meetings with public comment. At public comment, we invite citizens to come up and express their views for kind of limited to three minutes on any matter that affects the town. We will not, as a board, we do not engage in a dialogue during public comment, but we certainly would consider things that are brought before us and give remarks any appropriate consideration. So is there anybody interested in public comment online or Carol, come on up?
Carol Green, 56 North Street. I have a letter that I would just like to read, signed by 39 employees of the town of Norfolk. Better try to read fast.
That's okay.
To Select Board members Mecklenburg, Roach, and Hickman. In this period of transition and with careful attention to our current and future budget constraints, we, the undersigned, respectfully request the Select Board to consider appointing Todd Lindmark to the role of Acting Town Administrator. We bring this recommendation forward for many compelling reasons. Todd Lindmark is a highly qualified and dedicated professional. He is a certified governmental accountant with advanced degrees in taxation and law, as well as nearly a decade of experience in municipal finance and management supplemented by years in private practice. He has demonstrated proven leadership as both Finance Director and interim Town Administrator, with a track record of promoting operational stability, innovation, and sound fiscal stewardship. His deep institutional knowledge of Norfolk's operations, staff, and community needs, combined with the forward-thinking and collaborative leadership style, uniquely position him for this role. Todd's education-
He has delivered multiple balanced budgets and aligned resources with strategic goals despite fiscal constraints. His leadership in capital planning and debt strategy has contributed to the town's long-term financial health. Additionally, Todd has successfully managed complex state and federal grants, including ARPA and CARES, ensuring full compliance and impactful allocation. Supported collective bargaining with detailed financial modeling and projections, mentored staff for promotion and succession readiness, championed technology upgrades to enhance efficiency in resident services, fostered collaboration across departments such as schools, public safety, and public works to integrate financial and operational planning. We have had frequent transitions and Todd has provided steady, responsive leadership, as well as continuous presence to be relied upon during these periods. He preserved operational continuity and strengthened team morale. He handled sensitive personal and legal matters with discretion and professionalism, led the town's strategic planning initiative, and enhanced resident communication and government transparency. His strong regional relationships and advocacy for Norfolk at the state level have elevated the town's presence and influence. Todd brings a rare blend of legal, financial, and managerial expertise with a practical and collaborative problem-solving approach. He is respected and trusted by employees, department heads, board members, and regional partners. With a clear understanding of Norfolk's needs and a vision for the future, Todd is well-positioned to guide the community forward with integrity, transparency, and dedication. We believe that the qualities and experience you seek in a town administrator already exists within our current leadership. Todd lives in Norfolk, volunteers in the community, has the education, credentials, and has demonstrated a consistent commitment to public service and excellence. We acknowledge that the town has faced both visible and less visible challenges, and we are mindful of the fiscal constraints and budgetary pressures that lie ahead. In light of these circumstances, we believe that appointing Todd Lindmark as Acting Town Administrator is not only the most qualified and capable choice, but also a fiscally responsible one. As dedicated town employees, we are committed to moving forward in a positive and constructive manner. We respectfully request that Todd Lindmark be appointed as Acting Town Administrator for a minimum term of one year, with a formal evaluation at the conclusion of that period. We believe he has earned this opportunity to lead based on his demonstrated merit, experience, and leadership capability.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
I don't live in the town, but would you mind reading a letter?
Yes, you're welcome to come up.
This is a quick letter.
Would you just say your name?
Bob Bullock, former building commissioner. Dear Select Board, over the years, I've worked under approximately seven town administrators. I want to leave with some encouragement as you are presented with the hiring of the next administrator for the town of Norfolk. By far, the most productive and effective town administrator we've had thus far is Jack Hathaway under my tenure. Jack began work in Norfolk in the Finance Department and proved himself qualified. When we were in need of a new administrator, a group of department heads, myself included, recommended Jack for the position. We find ourselves in that same position today. Jack was here for 15 years as Town Administrator. We have had four town administrators in the past just six years, none of which have had the interest, invested interest in the town, and many lack the dedication and skills to successfully manage. Here we are making another collective effort to recommend our Finance Director, Todd Lindmark, to stand up for the town, for the people of Norfolk and lead this town. My hope is that you truly consider asking Todd Lindmark to take the helm as the next Town Administrator. I see the same qualities in Todd as I did in Jack. He's a known commodity. He cares for the town and the people. He will start work with advanced knowledge of the needs of Norfolk and has great ideas to lead the town in this uncharted economy. Todd brings a calm, quiet, thoughtful approach to complex issues. He listens with respect, leads with fairness, and consistently finds solutions that move the town forward. He's transparent, and he doesn't hide from the difficult situations, and can defend his positions with professionalism. I do truly care about the town of Norfolk, and I leave my position that I've held for 24 years and have worked with numerous town administrators and truly feel promoting Todd to Town Administrator is not only the logical choice, it's the right one. He knows the town, he has earned our trust, and I believe he can lead this town and ensure a strong, responsive, and effective town government for many years.
Thank you. Sue?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Susan Jacobson, 46 Needham Street, Norfolk. The letters that were just read, the first letter was signed by 39 employees, and two additional department heads wrote letters to the Select Board as well. One isn't here this evening. Recently, a large group of employees were at Bob Bullock's retirement party. Jack Hathaway, a 15-year Town Administrator in the town of Norfolk, asked why Todd had not been made interim Town Administrator. No one really had an answer. Jack said that employees that supported him becoming the permanent Town Administrator wrote a letter to the Select Board recommending him for that position. Well, now we had an idea. Collectively, a group decided to submit bullet points and thoughts, and the letter was created. We found that Jack was very committed to this community and worked hard, along with staff, to make Norfolk a wonderful place to live and work. We certainly were a team. The town has not had that camaraderie and commitment since Jack left. We have requested, we had requested to be on the agenda so that discussion could take place. We realize you cannot comment this evening with the board, but we were unable to accomplish that task. Todd had no idea that the group had been working on this, but we felt strongly that before we presented it to the Select Board, that we should notify Todd and let him know what we were doing. Todd was honored and humbled that he had such support and indicated that he was okay that we move forward publicly with these letters. We certainly don't need to provide any more detail about his qualifications, his commitment to the community, or that the staff has come to rely on him heavily over the last five and a half years for anything that comes across your desk day to day. It was recently suggested that we often have two options. We can stay stuck in the current mode, complaining about mistakes and mistreatments of the past, or we can move forward and choose a direction that is best for the community and the employees that work very hard to keep things working smoothly for our residents. We would ask this board to do what has been asked of us and choose the option that is best for Norfolk. Todd has been the Finance Director for eight years. He has had his hand in every single financial decision made. Who better to steer this ship through the upcoming rocky waters? We owe our residents fiscal responsibility and hard work, and we believe the best person to provide that is Todd Lindmark. Taxpayers certainly deserve all of us working together. Many of us not only work in Norfolk, but we are also very fortunate to call it home. Thank you for your time and the opportunity for me to speak. And just on a different note, I wanted, while there were so many of us here, to congratulate Bob Bullock on 24 years of service to the town of Norfolk.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Are there any other? Yes, Ben?
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Ben Sprague at 264 Main Street in Norfolk, and I just briefly wanted to speak about leadership. So leadership isn't about a title. It's about listening, responding, and being accountable to the people you serve. When a respectable number of our town's employees take time to sign a letter recommending someone from our community to lead them, that's not something to overlook. That's a statement. Whether you agree with their recommendation or not, their voices deserve more than silence or dismissal. In my own role, I've learned that when employees come to you with a suggestion or concern, that's not a challenge, it's a gift. It means they care, it means they're engaged. When they feel heard, they perform better, they stay longer, and they become part of something greater than just a job. Leadership means having humility, humility to listen, the courage to be transparent, and the wisdom to know that we don't have all the answers, but the people around us often do. We need to lead by example, and right now, our employees deserve a seat at the table and not just a closed door. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Anybody else, public comment? Anybody online? Kelly, anybody ready? Thank you for your remarks. We are moving on to number two on our agenda, reviewing proposals and consider approval of a search form. Kelly, I think you're, do you want to start us off?
Yes, sir. So we received two proposals, one from the Collins Center and one from Municipal Resources Incorporated, MRI. We have representatives from both of those organizations here this evening, so we can have Phil from the Collins Center come on up and answer any questions that you all have about the proposals that you received.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Collins Center. Tough act to follow. It sounds like a very passionate community for the Town Administrator position. And the Collins Center was created many years ago by the state legislature, and its sole purpose is to serve cities and towns when a city or town has a particular project. So we do capital projects, we do classification and compensation projects, so we'll come into a community and assist the community in updating job descriptions and classification plan, pay scales, and so forth. We'll do charter studies, so when a community wants to take a look at its organizational structure from time to time, we'll assist those communities in looking at that charter to make sure that it's achieving best practice and what the community wants. One of the practice areas for the Collins Center is executive search, and the Collins Center has submitted to you folks a proposal for the executive search for the Town Administrator position. Collins Center has worked in about 152 cities and towns in Massachusetts. There are currently about 352 cities and towns. It used to be 351, but Devens, Fort Devens became a town about 10 years ago or so now. And within those communities, our first and primary motivation is to make sure that we have a conversation with the Select Board and those communities to get a very good understanding of what it is that you want on a particular project. So in this case, we really want to understand the towns and needs, we want to talk to each member of the board. We'll also send out an employee survey as part of this engagement to try to get a really good understanding of how the community and how you folks view this position and view where Norfolk is at this point in time. One of the interesting facts that I heard tonight was the high turnover rate in the Town Administrator position. I mean, to have that many administrators in such a short period of time, you know, is there's something there, and that needs to be explored a little bit because obviously with an annual, your total operating budget or your total budget that you put to town meetings, I looked at, it was about $50 million, $51 million. So you're going to be vesting, and whoever you choose, typically it's a three-year contract, you know, the management of $150 million. That's a lot of money, it's a lot of responsibility, and it's a lot of impact on people's lives that go beyond that three-year term. So we want to make sure, the Collins Center really want to make sure that we have an in-depth conversation with the Select Board, with other people that are interested in this community to get an understanding of what are the critical issues in the community, what are the needs in the community, what are the expectations for the Town Administrator position, what do you expect the Town Administrator to be? And part of that, part of the benefit of a process is, at the end of that process, the person that is selected will have validity beyond simply the Select Board. They will have gone through a process, and it's very important, having been a town manager for over 30 years, the, if there is an impression that the town manager is political first and management second, that first of all, that manager won't last very long in a community. They'll come and go with the board. But more importantly, the Town Administrator position or Town Manager position is the leader of your administrative function in your community. There's a, requires, there's a great requirement that the citizens of the community view that person as a person of integrity. And how the person gets to the position through a process shows that there was at least a deep contemplation, and the person really rose to the top in a situation. So we take a look at the town needs, we talk to the key players in the town, we develop a community profile, and that community profile, I don't know if you have a copy of one of our community profiles in your package, but the community profile, I'll show this to folks that are here just so that they can kind of take a look at it. I'll leave it here for anybody who wants to look at it. This was one that was done in Bellingham. We just completed the search in Bellingham. As a matter of fact, the Select Board made the selection for a new Town Administrator in Bellingham, and that was following up the Town Administrator that had been for over 30 years. So it was a long-serving Town Administrator. This serves as kind of the advertisement for the position. This is what a candidate is going to look at as their first kind of opportunity to get an understanding of what the community of Norfolk is like, what are the key issues, what are the expectations for an administrator? Because any candidate should consider whether the community is the right fit for them, not just the other way around. We strongly, we recommend and we have used the process of creating a screening committee, and the screening committee for the initial applications should not have people that are currently elected, should not have people that are currently serving on boards. The best screening committees are really five citizens at large who, you know, are not currently serving on the planning board or the Conservation Commission or something of that nature. That screening committee, the function of the screening committee is to ultimately take the applications that are received and send to the Select Board whom they consider the best candidates for the position. In Bellingham, there were, I think, four candidates that were forwarded. Typically, it's anywhere from three to five candidates out of a pool that are forwarded to the Select Board for their consideration. The finalist candidates, those names become public. Up to that point, the names of the candidates are not public because there are some candidates, applicants quite frankly, that may not want their community to know they're applying for a position. The, our work group, the Collins Center, we will be with you every step of the way. Nothing happens without the Select Board approving it, so the, for instance, the community profile does not get issued until the Select Board accepts the community profile. The Select Board chooses the screening committee. The work of the screening committee, when it gets to the point where it's interviewing applicants or reviewing resumes, is executive session. That's per Mass General Law, because again, those names are confidential until they become finalists. The screening committee will go through those applications, will invite folks for a preliminary interview, and then based on those preliminary interviews, will send candidates forward to the Select Board. So the process at that point, you know, moves along at, you know, at a fairly decent pace for a selection process. Once you folks either make a selection or they're a finalist, there will be reference checks and background checks. Those include not only reference checks and background checks on, you know, on the references they provide, but there will be soft reference checks. There's also a review of social media and other aspects of a candidate's background so that you are not surprised and the community is not surprised by a candidate that may have some element of their background that would be embarrassing for your community or would disqualify that candidate for serving, you know, in your community. The timeline for the process typically is about a three to four month process, and part of that is, is because you're involved with boards and committees and getting folks, I mean, the two committees and getting folks just on a meeting schedule. The Collins Center will advertise in, you know, a variety of locations, the MMA Beacon and professional journals and so forth, but there's also quite a bit of outreach that Collins Center staff does to professionals that we may know in the field. So the Collins Center has a core group of full-time professionals, and then there are folks like myself who are an associate, I'm a retired town manager, so I do just project-based work. And when an opportunity arises, if members of the Collins Center know of folks that, even they may not even be, they may not be looking for a position but may be suitable for the position, will reach out to that person. And sometimes the best applicant is a person who may not even be looking for a job. They're satisfied where they are, but then they're intrigued by the opportunity. So everybody working at the Collins Center has extensive experience in municipal government. Mary Carty, who is the lead on the project, served for over 12 years in Watertown, is the HR Director and is doing this kind of work for many years. I myself have had over 30 years of experience in municipal management, all in Massachusetts, three different communities, three different size communities with different forms of government, one the city form of government, one a representative town meeting form of government, and one an open town meeting form of government. So we hope that we will have the opportunity to work with you. Our process is intense, we do bring great candidates, and the longevity of our candidates, you know, is pretty good once they get into the seat.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, I have a question. So the search committee you've mentioned, or sorry, the screening committee is made up of five citizens. So how is that process, how are those folks selected, I guess?
Well, first of all, there's an advertisement that's created, and again, the applications come to the Select Board. You folks make the selection of that committee, committee, the screening committee. Once you appoint the screening committee, we will meet with the screening committee and lay out the process to the screening committee members. The, there's kind of three, two or three phases to that process. The first phase is to get the screening committee acquainted with what their charge is and what their role is, more deeply acquainted. They'll know what that charge is when you appoint them, and it's part of the advertisement for the committee. But we will go through with them the community profile, we'll go through with them the advertisements and the outreach we're going to make in order to attract candidates to the position. Then we gather those applicants. Typically, we don't put a deadline on applications that is too short. We really want to have an applicant, application period that allows people to apply. There are some folks that, you know, take a little bit of time sometimes to contemplate whether they want to apply. So we want to make sure there's a fair amount of period of time for people to make application. Once we gather those applications, we meet with a committee, and we go through those applications, and there's a rating process that we'll work with the committee on to kind of sort those applications to see whom the committee may want to interview so that ultimately they can forward to the Select Board a suitable number of candidates for the position.
I'm going to jump in there and interrupt you for a second. So the rating process is based on the criteria that you've determined with the Select Board and with the surveys from staff and the community?
Correct.
So the criteria for your candidate comes from those sources, and then that's the, you hold it up against that criteria?
Yeah, we, the Collins Center and this process does, we guide this process, and we will help you to define what you, you know, what you want in a Town Administrator. But we will not supplant, you know, what we believe is a good idea. We're not doing this in place of your authority or concept or needs for this particular position. So that's what our role is, is we're really guides in this process. We are not going to steer the process one way or the other. It's actually a fascinating process because you do start out with, you know, a group of candidates that are kind of this wide, and typically, right now, candidacy pools might start out at 30, 35 applicants, and the screening committee will typically, you know, maybe interview eight, 10, sometimes 12 at the most because it just works that way. There are some applicants that, you know, apply that are pretty easy to say, okay, everyone kind of pretty quickly agrees. That person just doesn't, you know, make the grade for an interview. And then there's a group of candidates that are kind of maybe, well, there's something interesting there, maybe we want to take a look at that person. And there are always a few candidates that are, yeah, we're absolutely going to interview this person. It's very clear that they've got the requisite experience, they've got, you know, they really do meet kind of some of the elements that you want to see within the community profile. So that's where the real heavy work of the screening committee comes in, is when they're doing those interviews.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would just like to say, I think the process is great. If we didn't have a candidate, it would probably be ideal, but I personally don't think you're going to find a better candidate than Todd, just from, I mean, you have to earn trust and respect.
Yeah, and that's a dilemma that, I've been in the situation that the board has been in as a manager, where I've had a very strong internal candidate for a position, whether it be a police chief or fire chief or something of that nature. So, you know, those are very, all positions in municipalities are important, but some positions come with them with heavy or vested responsibilities. You know, a police chief has, you know, a huge legal responsibility to the community, and if you don't get the right one, for instance, it can create great liabilities for a community, as an example. So I've been in the position that you're in, and I understand the pull of that, but I also understand because as a young manager- But I also understand because as a young manager, I did appoint somebody that people lobbied for and was, by all appearances, the, you know, a great candidate. And I didn't, I don't want to say I came to regret it because I never did regret it, but I know that the dynamic changed because it was a political appointment before it was a professional appointment. And that's a very subtle thing in, you know, in my own, and look, it doesn't matter to me. I hope you choose the Collins Center. I think you would be well-served. I think the UMass Collins Center has been doing this for many years. We're, you know, we don't do it for profit. We have, we're legislatively charged to assist cities and towns.
Oh, the town doesn't have to pay?
You know what?
Oh, they don't charge for that?
No, I, you can take it up with Mary, all right? But my, my point is, my point is, you know, I've been a manager for many years, I'm fully retired. Anybody here who knows about the pension system in Massachusetts knows, we got a great deal. So whether I do this project or not isn't going to make, you know, any bit of difference to my quality of life. I just like doing this work because I don't want to be bored. But I will tell you from a professional perspective that anytime, I don't believe that a political hire, which is what a direct appointment would be, best serves any community. Because an administrator has to have the full confidence of not only the employees but the citizens they serve. And if they, and I'm not, I don't want to talk about an individual because I don't know the individual, but based on what I'm hearing, if that individual were to apply, I think the individual would successfully navigate the process. And, you know, that's the point. He would, that person would then have successfully navigated a proper selection process as opposed to an appointment. And I don't, based on what I'm hearing about this individual, I don't think he would have any qualms about trying to successfully navigate the process. And if anybody does not want to successfully navigate a professional selection process, that's a red flag. That's the only point I would make.
I have another question about the...
And I probably just lost the engagement, but so...
I have another question about the screening committee. So you mentioned that you advertise, right? And the folks on this committee would be residents of the community?
Right.
So how do you advertise that?
Well, I mean, we would look for it in the same manner and how you advertise for members of boards and committees. So I know that you have a website that puts out the word for members of boards and committees in that fashion. I don't know if you have a local newspaper where you put ads in once a week or anything of that nature. I know a lot of smaller communities do. But we would work with your acting town administrator to find the proper process to get the word out that the select board is looking for five members of the community to serve on a screening committee for the next town administrator's position. And I'll tell you right now, there's probably three applicants that are sitting here and there's anybody who's watching this, or the word will get out very quickly that you are interested in getting applicants, and I don't think you'll have a shortage of applicants for a screening committee. I think the key is, is you want to try to pick applicants that are coming in with an open mind, without a bias, that want to do the work because the selection for this position, you know, as I said earlier, it's $150 million over the next three years. But beyond that, there is legacy and liability if they choose the wrong person that can affect the community for many years. There's great positive benefit if you choose the right person, you can have great positive benefit for many years to come. And again, any candidate, whether they be an internal candidate or an external candidate, should not be afraid of going through a selection process where, you know, there is a chance to take a look at the person, and the cream usually rises to the top.
Thank you. And that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
The only problem I have with that is it's the expense for the process than the four month delay. If you have an internal person that is competent of doing the job and capable of doing the job, and you trust him doing the job, and he can just start right in and move, we don't lose four months of the budget process.
Well, I think, I think there's, there's points to be taken on both of that, both positive and negative. I don't think the expense, whether it be the amount that the Collins Center is proposing, which is $14,000, or MRI is proposing, which I think is 13 and change plus advertising costs, represents like one-tenth or one-one-hundredth of a percent of the next $150 million. So I don't think you should be afraid of cost, quite frankly. I think the second point is something that you need to consider as a body. So that's a point that I would consider if I were in your shoes. So you're, you're in a tough dilemma, but I'm talking to you the way I talk to my select boards and so forth, which is I'm always an advocate for a professional process, I'm always an advocate for a selection process because I think it validates the person sitting in the seat. And having sat in the seat for over 33 years and done it successfully, never was once fired, served in three communities, many renewals of my contracts, had to talk to citizens both in good times and bad, had to navigate budget processes and so forth, there is a soft element that you can, I do not think you should ignore, which is the legitimacy of the appointment. That's my point. And again, I don't, I'm not just, I, I think that it's wonderful that you have a candidate that, again, like, based on everything that's been described, I cannot imagine that candidate not being willing to go through a process because that candidate has wonderful qualifications.
I have another question about, mentioned there's an employee survey or like interview town employees, so what does that process look like?
So first of all, there's an interview with each member of the board to talk about the community and, again, what your observations are and what your, what you think would make the best characteristics and qualifications for a town administrator coming in. And, you know, I know, if I were having that conversation, I very well might be if selected, I really would want to kind of dive into this question of why are you having so much turnover? Town administrator, you, it's, that's not healthy for a town to have, and so folks that are commenting on that are absolutely on target. You should expect to have a town administrator serving you for, you know, seven to 10 years, I would say. Maybe a little bit less, maybe, it depends on, some, some stuff is a little generational. But, so I think that's part of the discussion. And then the talking to the employees, you know, part of that survey, it depends on the select board and the conversation we have with the select board. Are you comfortable with us talking to employees directly, or would you rather us do that in a different format? So that's part of, you know, once we get into the engagement and the meeting with the select board to kind of discuss it.
Or both, is both an option?
I'd have to check with Mary on that. I, I'm just not sure.
Okay, thank you.
What's your average tenure based on the placements that you have made?
My understanding from talking with Mary, that, I would have to talk to Mary on that. I don't, I don't want to give you a precise number because I know through experience, precise numbers take on a life of their own. But I can certainly get back to you. But I know that we've done many searches, and I know many of the people who've been in the positions that the Collins Center searched and successfully placed. And again, the, there have not been, to my knowledge, Collins Center placements that, you know, have been one or two-year type of tenures, they've been longer than that. And again, what you're looking for is, at a minimum, is a mid-career professional. You know, you're looking at somebody that has committed to public service, that has managerial experience, and, you know, somebody that has proven that they can perform in a very, very complex workplace.
Well, to my point is, sort of, the last hire that we had that was very successful was the finance director that moved out. He was here 15 years. He had moved. Then we used an outside firm such as your firm. I got someone that didn't last, they were sort of, the contract wasn't renewed. Then we got another one, and at, towards the end of their contract, they had left and got another job. That's sort of why we're in this situation of short-term town administrators. And that's why I'm sort of leaning to, I personally feel that the track record of the finance director that's been here eight years has the trust and respect of all the town to improve in his leadership and everything else. All the things that you said would make a good town administrator, he demonstrates, so.
Yeah, and again, I want to be cautious because, first of all, I don't, I don't really want to engage in a, out of respect for that particular individual and the fact that we're at a public meeting, I don't want to discuss the character or reputation of an individual or anything of that nature. I'm talking more of just a process point of view. And again, as a, as a manager, my preference always, when I went through the hiring process, was to have a process. So for instance, one of the rules that I always had internally, and one of the rules the Collins Center will have, is is we don't give courtesy interviews. I never gave a courtesy interview where I worked. I don't think that's fair to the candidate. I don't think that's fair to the, to the process. So I'm just a heavy process person because I think process helps through, by going through a process, first of all, it gives everyone time to evaluate the choice, and it brings other people into that evaluation. You know, I don't think I ever made ultimately a selection with a department head position just based on one-on-one interview with myself and that person. I always had a team of folks with me to help do that evaluation because I recognize that, you know, you know, I'm one person. I can make, you know, one person can make a mistake, six people, it's a little bit harder. It's not impossible, but it's a little bit harder. You know, so it's, I mean, you're in a very difficult position. You're, in some ways, you're in a great position in that you've got, you know, a potential candidate or a candidate that's incredibly strong, at least initially based on what people are saying. So, and you have a sense, you know, at least for yourself, and obviously you can't speak for the board, the board will collectively come to some kind of a consensus. But you at least have a sense of what you think is important, that you yourself as a board member, which is really beneficial for anybody, whether it be myself or MRI that ultimately gets the position. That's beneficial to have board members that have opinions and have kind of a sense of what it is that they think is important because that helps in the search process or the selection process, as far as that may be, whether you do a search or not. But you'll, you know, you'll find that I'm kind of a direct person. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Really, really appreciate your time.
And again, I don't know if I answered your, all of your questions, and I'm sorry if I didn't, but I can certainly get back to, get back to you.
You hit on all those, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
I believe Kelly is bringing in our next. It is. Come and join us.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So how do you want to handle this, Madam Chair?
I think what would be nice is if you could tell us a little bit about your proposal and what you think you bring to the town.
Okay.
I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, but there is a strong, we heard from people at the beginning, I think it's fair for you to know that there's a component of department heads, a fair number who are advocating for one candidate.
I did see that.
And so part of this conversation is about the process.
Yep.
And so we'd love to hear what your organization is, is offering to us, and also have an opportunity for board members to ask questions.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you for the invite, by the way. And Mike, how are you?
Living the dream.
Mike and I have worked with each other in some other communities, and he regrets that we're friends, but... Again, thank you so much for the invitation. MRI has been around, and I've been working for MRI for about a decade now. You have all about materials. I retired out of Burlington. I was there twice, believe it or not. I was there as their first town administrator in 1980. They just passed their special act to create a town administrative representative form of government, and they hired me to be the first one, which is always a dangerous thing, number one. Number two, the next year, Prop 2 and 1/2 came in. And people are telling, I vividly remember, I hope there's none of them here, but I had to lay off six firefighters my first budget and six police officers my first budget. Not easy to do when, first of all, they never had a town administrator, and it was, it was very, very difficult. But be that as it may, I was a town manager as opposed to a town administrator in Barrika. And I've served what Mike is doing now in Whalen as an interim, in Boxborough, and I started out in Maynard. So I've had a variety of communities, Barrika being the largest, 45,000 people, and Boxborough being the smallest, about 4,000 people. So I've been in all of those situations, and I had a, a pretty good career. I was also an elected selectman in my town of Tingsborough, which is pretty close, it's about 13,000 people, actually. That was an interesting experience for me because I had sat on both sides of that table. And then I went to be the, I took a break for about six years. I went to be the president of a large regional chamber of commerce. And frankly, from my perspective, that helped me by getting back into municipal government because I really understood a lot of the business concerns that heretofore I wasn't engaged with. So that experience helped me. My partner in this project, if we're successful moving forward, is Buzz Stepczynski, retired manager out of Andover, Massachusetts, and Wilmington, Massachusetts. And he's up from Maryland where he got his start and then moved up to Massachusetts, still lives in Andover. Alan, our boss, is a retired police chief and town administrator. So he's been on, he's been in a number of different things. And his firm, our firm, does a lot of police assessments, fire assessments, all of that kind, in addition to manager screenings and manager solicitations and those type of Interestingly enough, when, when we start our process, and you saw it in there, we map out about a 12 to 16-week period. And the reason there's some flexibility in there is because some communities choose to have a screening committee made up of residents of the community. Most don't have an elected person sitting on that. They really want the input from the residents of the community. Some, some communities on the search committees would put a department manager in to get that kind of perspective. We don't say yea or nay to that. We think, you know, whatever's right for that community is right for that community. So if you have a screening committee, we will work with them as we will work with the board, depending on what path you choose. So to begin the process, we will talk to all of you, the three of you individually. We, we don't like groupthink, so we'll talk to all of you. And part of the, part of the issue we're getting to is to create the ad. The ad doesn't have to be elaborate. It's a notice to people that the job is available. Some towns will do a page of an ad. You don't need to do that. We do that in our profile and challenge statement that I think we sent to you folks.
Yep.
I think it was Lexington one. We finished Lexington about a year ago. Very, very engaged community, very engaged community. They had a screening committee of 11. Barrika, which we're doing now, has a screening committee of 13 members. That's not the selectman's decision, that's by their charter. That gets a little bit unwieldy to what I talked to you about earlier, about the timeframe. It's difficult to get that many people together for a meeting. And every time you miss a meeting and push it into another week or a couple of weeks out, it elongates the process, if you will. So once we get the input from you on the ad and input from you and other people you want us to talk to, by that I mean, we want to talk to all of your department managers individually, not groupthink. We want to hear the real story because that helps us as we try to define the type of person who will succeed here, when we hear from them. What type of person do they think can succeed in Norfolk? And I know a little bit about Norfolk. I think you all know, I knew Justin pretty well. He had been in a couple of our searches previously, and he says nothing but good things about the community, so, which is, which is good for us to hear. So we want to talk to all of the individual department managers. We also want to talk to other people you want us to talk to. For instance, some communities... For instance, some communities don't want us to talk to the school superintendent. We always want to talk to the school superintendent. That synergy between the town and the schools, there has to be a connection there, just has to be. It's too important. You know what the focus is on the budget, the town versus the schools. And it's just, it's so important to have that positive relationship. Doesn't mean you're going to agree all the time, but you need a positive relationship. The good news for us is when I was in Barrika, I was the town manager there, the superintendent was down the hall. We used to have Monday, we used to call them Tuesday morning coffees because he was at a meeting the night before and so was I. And we, we'd talk about what happened to us at those meetings. It helped so much as we went through the, the process going forward for budget reconciliations going forward, working with the finance committee, working with all of that. We were almost always in agreement on the final number before town meeting. Very seldom had contentious meetings between the schools and the towns. That's not always the case in a lot of communities. You, you see a lot of that still going on today, especially as finances are getting tight. There's always going to be that, that issue between who's allocating what money to whom. And so anyway, we, we want to talk to the superintendent. We want to talk to people like the moderator of your community. We want to talk to whoever you think we should in terms of chairs of the planning board, the council, whatever you guys think, but we want to talk to them to get the perspective. The purpose of all of that is so we can create an ideal profile of the individual who's going to be successful here. It's not a perfect process, but it's worked very well for us because we, we get it from the ground up. We get the information from the ground up. We don't create the profile. We get it from the people who are working here. And that's important to us. They know better than we do about who's going to succeed here and who's not going to succeed. So that's part of our process. And we, as we do that, we start to create that profile and challenge. I've looked at a couple of your meetings. You guys are very civil. I can't say that about some communities who shall remain nameless. And that's a good thing because anybody who's looking to come to Norfolk is going to look at those meetings and say, yeah, I don't want anything to do with that crowd. Or they seem to be really professional. They've got their stuff together and that's a place I want to be because I think I can lend some real support for their goals and objectives. And I have my own thoughts on where this town could go and those type of things. So we think that's very important. So that document is prepared concurrently with the ad. That goes out, we advertise 30 days. We advertise in all of the venues, the New England venues. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. We, we advertise in Massachusetts, obviously, the Mass Municipal Association, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont, New Hampshire and Maine. Because we recruit, we recruit all over New England. Most of our stuff is in Massachusetts. Buzz and I handle Massachusetts for Alan. We also handle Rhode Island and Connecticut. Alan and his team handle Maine, Vermont and New Hampshire. The good news about that is we've found people up in those communities who want to relocate back to Massachusetts and come here. They got their, they, they cut their teeth, so to speak, in communities up in New Hampshire or Vermont and have come back and they're still active managers in Massachusetts that we recruited. And we know of them because Alan and his side do all of those northern tier communities. Buzz and I just finished one in Connecticut, Manchester, Connecticut, where the individual we recruited was from Wisconsin, but he wasn't from Wisconsin. He was from Wellesley and he went out to Wisconsin to become a village manager and wanted to come back to New England. So anyway, he applied and he was terrific. They liked him a lot and they hired him down in Manchester, Connecticut as their first town manager. Again, not an easy thing to do, but. So in terms of the, the advertising, we also advertise in the ICMA. I'm sure you know about the International City Managers Association. That's our professional organization. Engineers have theirs, lawyers have theirs. But that's our professional organization and that goes, that goes universally, it's worldwide. But obviously it focuses on the United States. We got a person to go to South Kingston, Rhode Island, who was actually, not South Kingston, I'm sorry, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. He was a captain in NATO. He was in Brussels when he saw the ad. And his family's from Rhode Island and he was retired from the Navy and he wanted to come back. He's still there. They love him. This was eight years ago. So the point of all that is we have a pretty good reach for people, not just in Massachusetts. Now, having said that, the caveat is not an easy, not an easy search these days. You're going to hear it if you haven't heard it already, there, it's, it's difficult to find the, the quality candidates. There are still quality candidates out there, but not to the extent that there were. We tell people when we interview like this, we used to have 40 to 50 candidates. We, we get 20 to 25 now. So you can, and it's diminished returns also. We probably will bring forward six to eight candidates where we used to bring 10 to 12 candidates forward. So it's a diff, you're, you're in competition with other communities, as you know. And that, that people who are good in the field will have their pick as to where they want to go. And that's, that's something that, and I, we haven't even talked about competitiveness and everything else, but we would have to talk to you about that if we're selected to help you out with the search. So once we go through all of that and the interviews with the staff and prepare the documents, we advertise for 30 days. Once we get the returns on that, we, Buzz and I review all of the resumes that have been submitted and we discount a number of them right off the bat, just because they're not quality, they're not quality candidates. We don't go to LinkedIn or any of that stuff because you type in manager at LinkedIn, you'll get the auto zone person to say, yeah, I could, I could be the, you know, the manager in Norfolk because I've, you know. So we discount that. We review them. We do due diligence. Our office does the due diligence, checks on anything that's in the public arena. Obviously, some people have some stuff that they don't want to share, but if it's in a public arena, it's fair game. So for instance, if somebody from XYZ community in Massachusetts was fired, we'll get that, we'll share it with you, we'll talk to the individual. And the likelihood is we would not move that person forward, so you wouldn't have to deal with that. On the other hand, some people are fired not for cause. You know, the political dynamics in some communities, it's not the manager's fault or the administrator's fault. So we take that into account. We give you a, we give you that perspective when we bring candidates forward as to who they are and what happened in their past. And we try to narrow it down to a number. And once we get that number, we'll talk to you about if you want to do it, what we call essay questions. And the reason we ask essay questions is probably two or three of them, not just specific to Norfolk, but specific to municipal management. We want to understand if they can, A, write. It's almost a lost art these days. I don't know if, my wife was a teacher for 37 years, by the way, and she goes ballistic with, with getting rid of penmanship and all that kind of stuff. But we want to know if they can write. And the reason that's important is because we want to know how, how they're going to communicate with, with people in the community. And it's not always with a keyboard. And if people can't put sentences together, that's a problem. I know everything's self-correcting now with, and especially today with AI and ChatGPT and all that kind of stuff. But we want to see if they can put their thoughts together because the importance of communicating to the residents in town, to a town meeting, for instance, is vital for the next manager to be able to communicate with your residents, not to mention you, obviously, and what you people need. So we, we do that. Buzz and I will get the responses. We generally give them 10 days because these people are generally pretty busy. So we give them 10 days, two weekends is what we call it, to answer the questions. And we don't want them to write a novel. We want them to just answer the questions. And by the way, I understand you might have been a teacher. You know people can write a paragraph that tells you everything you need to know. Other people write three and a half pages that haven't told you anything. So it gives us another tool to evaluate these individuals. And I know we were in a town not too long ago, talking about the ChatGPT and why do you want to ask them questions? They'll have AI write them the answers. Well, that's okay. But once we get the answers, we then dig down with them. And you could do the same thing because you'll get the essay responses. And you can say, look, you talked about housing here and your experience and affordability and all that. Tell us about that. And if they didn't write it, they're going to be, well, you know, I've read a lot about it. Really? You know, so anyway, it's still a tool. And if we're lucky enough to be engaged here, we'll talk to you about that, whether or not that's a necessary tool. There are other ways to find out their skill sets in terms of communicating, either written or oral, and we could talk to you about that. The other thing we do is we set up a anonymous email to our office, so it's not a public document, for the people in town. You want to tell us what you think we should need, we should look for in the next town manager, town administrator, send us a note. And it goes to MRI's email system. It's not a public document. And in some towns, what we call active towns, we get some pretty good responses. Some towns and the residents don't use it at all, but it's an option. It gives people a chance to comment in the process. And they can say whatever they want. And it's anonymous. We don't need names. Just send it to us what you think. And then we summarize that without names and we'll give it to you. Here's what a half dozen people said that they are looking for, for traits for your next town manager, town administrator. And it's, it's a useful tool is all it is. It's just another tool in the process. So once we look at that and, and get the responses and eliminate a couple because they probably haven't answered the questions, then we'll start to talk to you about it. Or a screening committee. Again, I'm prefacing all of this by saying if there's a screening committee, there's a buffer between you and a screening committee. We typically recommend that the screening committee talk to four, five, six people, no more than that. And then recommend to the board, not ranked, recommend to the board, three candidates. Not two, because we've had people who had two and one dropped out and then you're stuck. So that's the process. Again, it's either, to your question, Kevin, four to 12 to 16 weeks. And the, the longer, the longer timeframe is because of a screening committee if you choose to have one, but that's up to you to decide. So then we recommend to you, we recommend to you, the screening committee recommends to you, the three finalists, not ranked, because that's your choice, not the screening committee's choice. It's your choice to pick the person you think is best for the community. We work with you on a contract if you need it. The final candidate, whoever you select, and you get the comprehensive proposal from us, gets a very serious background investigation. I mean, very serious. Alan, I told you, is a retired police chief. He's got access to a lot of means, if you will. And we check all the financial records of people, you know. If you had a DUI in 1999 while you were in college, tell us about it because we'll find it. It's not a game changer, but don't, don't try to mislead us because we'll find it. And that's for the final candidate because we, we explore their credit history, all the banking arrangements they have, whether or not they've had defaults anywhere. Because that's important for you if you're looking for your chief administrative officer, to know that whoever you're bringing on board has a clean background. And again, like I said, some stuff, minor stuff, look, we were all involved. I went to college, you know. So there may be minor stuff. We just want to know about it so we can tell you about it so that you're not surprised that somebody in town did a Google search and found that and said, why didn't you know about it? So, and then, you know, as I said, we'll help you in any way that you need us to help you, but you, you've got a track record, so you know, you guys know what you're doing.
Questions?
Yeah, I'm going to ask the same questions I asked the last firm. So with the screening committee, how is that handled as far as those residents that are selected or how do you advertise for that?
We don't. You do. If you choose to have a screening committee, you, you've got to do a couple of things. The size, we don't recommend 13. I'm dealing with that now. Five people, seven people, something that's a group that can get together, you know, without, well, I've got vacation next week, I've got this. And if you don't have, you know, with the open, if you don't have your full committee involved in the process, the likelihood is they may not be able to be involved going forward if they miss some of the components of the process. So five to seven. You advertise. The select board is looking for people in town who have an interest in helping us find our next town administrator. And you'll be surprised who comes out of that. You'll get people in town that have skill sets that, they've never been involved in town. When I was doing a search in one of my towns, I asked for a screening committee. I got a senior executive HR person from the MITO Corporation. I got the retired state police colonel who lived in my town. Said, yeah, I'd love to do that. I don't want to serve for a year or like you folks, I just want to do something for my town and I'd love to do it. And I think I have a pretty good skill set to bring. You know, somebody in charge of HR for MITO or the, or the Colonel for the State Police Department, pretty good skill sets. So you'll be surprised how people in town might want to participate because they want to, they want to be involved. And it's something that they, they can bring some real, some real positive attributes. So, so, but that's up to you.
And then the other question, so you mentioned you interview town employees, but you also will talk to department heads, potentially the school superintendent.
Yep.
Chairs of committees. I, I would advocate to do that. I know you said that's optional. Does that slow the process down by including all those additional people as far as the 12, six week timeframe?
There's two of us, so we divided up pretty good. I'm guessing maybe, Taliesin, that you probably have 20 people you want us to talk to. And that includes department managers and other elected officials, if you want us to talk to them, 20, 25 people. Buzz and I, what we'll do is we'll come out here for a day or two and we'll just individually, we'll ask Mike to set us up in a room separately. We don't both interview the same person because we, we want to hear different perspectives and not, again, the group thing thing. I don't want Buzz and I to sit there and say, well, what did you think she said or he said? And, and, no, no, no. We're going to talk after and say, well, this is what this person told me. And by the way, it's very confidential. We don't say anything to anybody. We don't say, the police chief told me this and the fire chief told me this. And they don't like each, you know, we don't get into that. So, but it's informative to us how that relationship works now and how it would work in the future with a candidate, whoever those candidates are. So, so we do it in a couple of days. Now, the phone calls sometimes at night to the elected folks and all that kind of stuff, but it's, it doesn't, to your question, it doesn't really stretch it out.
Okay. And we as a board decide who gets interviewed.
That's up to you.
As far as how many people we want you all to talk to.
Yeah, that's up to you. We don't, as I said, the only recommendation we have, and I don't know why it is, we had some communities, I think if I dug down, I'd find out why really, they, they didn't want us to talk to the schools. Whether or not it was a regional school or the local schools, they just didn't want us to talk to the, and, and we insisted we talk because we think it's that important.
You stated that if the town employees give you recommendations and everything, you probably couldn't get any better recommendations than them.
I heard some of this earlier. You're right.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, that's fine. We take that all, we, we take all those comments in and then we go through the candidates and the candidates have to meet those, those qualifications and, but, but they're going through a process. Whoever it is is going through a process. And if they rise to the top because of a lot of the comments we heard, Kevin, then so be it. You've gone through a process.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I particularly like the, the fact that you do the thorough background check and not just for, you know, criminal or anything like that, but also financial, right? We're a town in facing financial headwinds. We want somebody that can manage their own finances.
Yes, yes, you do.
That's a running this town. So I think that that's important, the fact that you do.
Oh, it's comprehensive, Taliesin. And I will, I'll give you one example. And it wasn't a game breaker because the individual was incredibly qualified. But when we did, and this individual was from Fort Lauderdale, came up here for a job in, in Connecticut. And we were astounded by what we found. Had a small business years ago with his son. It collapsed, filed for bankruptcy, credit delinquencies. It collapsed, filed for bankruptcy, credit delinquencies, it was all over the place. And we had it all. And we sent it to the, it was a council, town council. They were like, you've got to be very careful about credit reports legally. You've got to be very careful. You can't be expressing that in public and all that kind of stuff. They had it. But they had the information. And the individual explained it like I couldn't believe. I mean, he's very articulate, very smart. And it was all legit. It was all legit. And the council had problems with it until they heard from him. And he explained, he said, look, I was going through a tough time, you know, I had my son living with me, we went bankrupt, it was right before COVID. And then he opened up a business during COVID. And he said, you know, some people think I'm stupid to do that, but my son and I wanted to do it. But it was all explained. And the appointing authority, in this case, a council, they didn't worry about it. They said, you know, financially, to your point, this guy was a wizard. I mean, a wizard. And he came from a, he came, he was assistant city manager in Fort Lauderdale. So he was a pretty big position for him. And he worked out well. He ultimately decided to leave the community and went back down south. It's a little different environment, New England vis-à-vis the South. And he kept telling us that. Said, you think this is tough, come down to Florida.
And then just one last question for me. So then, once, I'm just assuming we're going to go with the screening committee. Obviously, we'll decide that. But if we go with the screening committee, they select the three finalists. Those finalists are interviewed during our select board meeting.
Those are public discussions, yes. Yes. The screening committee doesn't need to be public in Massachusetts, and they could go through all of those interviews, and nothing is public. And speaking of that, I'll just, you guys all know it, you've been involved in government, you've got to be very careful, and we tell that to the screening committee. This stuff is all confidential. You've got some people who are currently sitting in jobs. And if their word, if their name gets out, not while they're finalists, everybody who's in these positions understands, once they're a finalist, their name is out there. And I'll just give you an example. We had in one town, we had a screening committee, and I'm still not sure who, but somebody on the screening committee had a candidate he or she was interested in, and called the town. Before that person had told their appointing authority they were a candidate. That was not well received. And that's a problem. And we are very forceful with the screening committee. This is confidential. These people have careers, they have lives. You know, if they move on to the final, everybody understands their name's going to be, you know, it's going to be in public. But we make it very clear. And I only had one instance where that happened. And I still don't know why, but.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No.
In the proposal that you sent, there were two different sections. One section said that the advertising was included, and the other section said advertising was going to be the responsibility of the town.
The advertising in this is responsibility of yours. We also did not, oh, by the way, we have a guarantee. I don't know if you've read through that. We will guarantee, if we go through the process, the legitimate process with you folks, and that person works out an agreement with you, within a year, they decide to leave, we will do the search over. And, you know, we've had some communities, can you give us a longer guarantee? And we said, we can't guarantee how a community's going to, we can't guarantee if you all are going to be elected next year. And then what? You know? So we give a year. We give a year, because the people like you, going forward, if you sign a contract, you folks are all responsible for that contract. So we give a full year. And, you know, if there's malfeasance, misfeasance, or any of that stuff, we'll do it over for you. We should have found that. So anyway, that's our guarantee as part of the comprehensive package. And the background check is part of that.
And so as we think about budgeting for it, I think the quote was $12,000, but then what would we think about for advertising in terms of the overall cost to us?
Yeah, we think it's about a grand. ICMA is the most expensive, that's the international. I think it's about $500 bucks. The others, MMA is $100 bucks, you know, New Hampshire's $100 bucks, Connecticut's free. So anyways, we would suggest $1,000 bucks.
Awesome. What do you think sets your organization apart from other search organizations?
Our reach. Our reach in New England. Because sometimes in New England, and particularly in Massachusetts, we're a little bit myopic. We think the world revolves around us. It doesn't. I hate to say that, but there are other, there are other very talented managers that can come and do the job here, especially if you're from New England. They're familiar with town meetings, they're familiar, you know, the way we govern ourselves. We do, believe this, we do a lot in New Hampshire. They have ballot, they have a ballot vote on their budget. A ballot. Townwide ballot. Imagine? They don't have a town meeting. They have a townwide ballot that gets mailed to everybody. $50 million, do you agree or not? No. That's tough. That's really tough. Which is why we've had some New Hampshire managers relocate to Massachusetts.
Awesome. Any other questions?
No.
Any questions? Anything we're forgetting? Nope. We really appreciate your time.
Kelly's been very helpful, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, again. And good luck, whatever you do.
So I think.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
See you.
So I think at this point, we need to make a decision, think about the pros and cons of the two organizations that we saw, and see which one is a preference. If we just look at the money, the first one was $14,000, the second one was $12,000 plus $1,000 additional for advertising. So I think financially, it kind of is a wash. So I guess I'd be interested in your opinions about.
I mean, I think for me, I'm leaning towards MRI, because it seems like their process is a little bit more thorough. The other firm, sorry, Colin Senter, mentioned the search committee, but they didn't mention including all of these other department heads and, you know, chairs. I think it would be beneficial in our town to hear from, you know, as many as possible, including the schools, to his suggestion. And again, I was impressed by what he talked about as far as the background, the thorough background checks that they do. So that's what I'm leaning towards. There are also the cheaper options, so that helps.
I, myself, don't feel we need to spend the $12,000 when we have a candidate that we don't need to have a background check. He's trusted and respected by all the employees. The firm right there, that we said, he says he could not bring a better candidate than after what the town employees said. Now, all the town employees feel that Todd would be the best candidate. He's respected and trusted. Now, if they go on and get a search, how's it going to be any better than what they already said? He said himself, he could not get a better candidate than what the town employees said.
I agree with that, and I think that there is obviously merit in the town employees' opinions, absolutely. However, I think we need to hear from others in the community, other residents, which is why I like the idea of the search committee, to have residents who don't work in town hall on that committee, to hear from all the department heads, to hear from as many people as possible. They mentioned they also reach out via survey for email for folks to respond to. So I mean, and just, you know, I've never had, worked in a company where an internal candidate was automatically just appointed to a position. I feel like everyone should apply. And as both search firms said, if that person is the most qualified individual, based on what we're hearing from all of the folks that have weighed in here, then they will be part of the finalists, which is a public process, that everyone in the community will hear from all of the finalists, and will make a selection. So I just don't think that pointing someone to the position is something that we voted on as a board. We voted the last meeting to hire a search firm. That's what the three of us voted on.
And I think from my experience with doing tons of hiring, like, if we wanted it to be Todd, and if Todd's the one, we're doing him a disservice just to, just to hire him. It does him a disservice. It gives him much more credibility as a town administrator responsible for the community if he's gone through the process.
I don't know, I feel the eight years' town experience he has proved himself.
But it isn't, the thing is, you can believe that, and I can believe something, Taeys can believe, but the process is a group. Like, when I did hiring, and I did a ton of hiring in my job, I always had a team. You bring the team in, because they have a perspective that you don't, they ask a question that you didn't think about, or they bring experience, either because that person's going to teach with them, or that person has had a relationship. So you need that team. The team brings something to the decision that is, I think, is super valuable. I was surprised when I read through the, both of their proposals, how the screening committee didn't have, the first thing is like, if there's no select board, I'm like, what? Because I was very involved in the last screening committee. By listening to both firms, it really makes sense to have it, people from the community, because ultimately, the town administrator is accountable to them. And so bringing in that screening committee, I think, is really valuable. I love this, this one, the, in the first interview, he said they could either survey the staff or meet with them, and I liked this, would have a combination of both. I love the anonymous email, where people can email in and have that opportunity to give their unfettered feedback. I think there's value in that. And so they offered some things in the MR, I get those letters mixed up. MRI, is it? MRI. Had offered a few more things, and I liked the connection to the schools and the communication. I believe so much in the process, and the process will do us well. Like, it will serve the employees well, it will serve the town well, it will serve the board well, because the process will help us see what's important.
And I, again, I'm just going back to, we voted on already to go with the search firm, so I think.
Well, I mean, sometimes you make a decision, you can change your decision. I mean.
I just thought we were in agreement on that, based on our last meeting. Doesn't sound like.
Different information changes sometimes. You can change your decision on found information.
So I agree, you can change, but I think that we have a responsibility, not only to the employees of the town, but to the citizens of the community, to make a decision that has gone through a process. So I feel very strongly about the process, but I also feel very strongly that qualified internal people should apply. Like, the process doesn't preclude.
Well, I'm not saying he can't apply. The selectmen can interview him. We don't have to have the company for $12,000 and go take us 16 weeks to interview him. I mean, the select board could interview, in the same way another finalist would come forward, we interview.
I think that we have folks here that are really skilled at peeling back and going through. I think that, to Taeys's point, last time, we decided to use a company. And to make sure that everything, to eliminate any bias on the select board, or to eliminate those kinds of things, that we should use a firm to do what they do. And it's not a unique thing that Norfolk is doing. It's what all communities, when they're hiring these professional positions, they go through a firm to do, to help with the search, to make sure that the entire community and employees are represented.
Can I comment?
So, Madam Chair, at this juncture, if the board is in agreement that they want to move forward, then what you need is a motion to approve a contract with whoever you decide as the, as the firm. And then, and then you can.
So I would entertain a, entertain a motion to approve a contract for the amount of $12,000 between the town of Norfolk and MRI to conduct a search for the town administrator position.
Second.
Actually, if you could move that, just so moved.
So moved.
Okay. Then we need a second.
Second. All those in favor? Oh, any discussion?
No, I'm going to just save them voting, because I don't, I'm not, I don't believe that this is the way to go. But that's fine. You two can vote, it's a two or three, that's fine.
Okay, or you can vote against it.
Okay. I'll go instead.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. I recognize, I really appreciate the passion you're bringing to that, and I think the process will get us to the right end.
Okay.
So moving to the club license number three. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. At your, I believe it was your last meeting, you voted to increase licenses for various, the prices for various licenses. One of them that you did not vote on was club license, because there was some question about what that was. That is for private clubs. And apparently, at this point, this juncture, you do not have any private clubs within the town, so that there is no, there was no licenses for that. But we don't want to miss anything, just in case that happens. So at this point in time, we are recommending an increase, or an increase to that particular license for, club license is all alcohol. We're recommending $500, I'm sorry, $12.
Yes.
Sorry, yeah, $500 for that particular license, that's the recommendation from, that Justin had left.
$500. Yes. So for, we don't have any clubs, so it's kind of moot. But I said $1,000, like, all the other communities are charging $1,000, let's charge $1,000, just in case some golf club opens up. I think that's in keeping with other communities, it's not excessively high. So I would go with $1,000. I don't know if you have any feelings about that, but that's what other people are charging.
I don't know, you might be able to entice someone in for, with $500, the lower price.
Oh, you could, you could.
Right, so then you can go up three or four years later, you know?
Okay. I'll buy that logic. What do you think?
I think we'll just stick with the proposed rate, since we don't have anything, so.
Cool. So I'll entertain a motion to amend the club license for all alcoholic fees to $500 effective immediately.
Oh, second.
No, you say so moved.
So moved.
Second. All those, any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number four. Karen, if you would come on up for number four. Do you want to lead us off, Mike, or?
Actually, I'll leave this to Karen. It's her, it's her grant. It is a grant. I'll actually do an intro, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, through you. Karen came to me with this contract for a grant that she was able to apply for and win. It's a competitive grant, I believe, through the state. And I'll let her do the rest, because I think you need to hear from your department heads when they do things like this.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as Mike said, this is a grant. It comes, it's actually money that's allocated by the state, which used to be the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and they've changed their name to Executive Office of Aging and Independence. Same, same agency, though. And they send funds to the Mass Council on Aging to distribute to different people that apply for different categories of grants. So I applied for one that was specific to dementia and memory loss, and something of programming or assistance around that. And so the bottom line is, we applied for and received $4,800 to provide assistance with our memory café, which I'll get into in a second, so you know what that is, just in case you don't. And it's money that's authorized to be spent between July 1st of this year and June 30th of next year. So it's a fiscal year. And so for anybody who doesn't know what a memory café is, it's for individuals who are living with memory loss and their care partners. It could be one care partner, or it could be more that come to this. These memory cafes are becoming more prevalent as the number of people with dementia and memory loss continues to rise, along with the longer life expectancies. More than 6 million people in the U.S. have been diagnosed with some form of dementia, according to the National Institutes of Health. And researchers estimate that 42% of Americans over the age of 55 will eventually develop dementia of some kind. So the Norfolk Memory Cafe aims to provide a little normalcy, fun, and social interaction in a nonjudgmental environment for these individuals living with memory loss and their caregivers. So we will have, we had our first one, so first of all, I should say, I'm in partnership, I'm in partnership with the library on this. We decided to do this together. So it's held at the library. And the sessions are the fourth Wednesday of every month. And we've already had one where we had entertainment come in, which was very successful. And then it's, so the fourth Wednesday, so it was June 25th, I think, and it's July 23rd, next week coming up is the next one. And it's from 11:00 in the morning to 12:30 in the afternoon. We usually have the entertainment or whatever the activity is, we'll go till noon. And then we have, we provide sandwiches or some other light lunch as well for people that are there. Our next session actually will feature Donna Newman-Bluestein, who's a certified dance therapist. So who's accustomed to working in memory cafes as well as other venues. And just so you all know, to register, if you find you know anybody that might be interested, they can either call us at the senior center or if they're tech savvy, they could also register online with the library. So that's essentially what this is for, is just support the entertainment and the food for this memory cafe.
Awesome. I think that's amazing. Any questions or comments?
No.
So I will entertain a motion for, to accept a grant from the Massachusetts Council on Aging in the amount of 4,800 to be used for COA programming and authorize the interim town administrator to execute the contract on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll get that to you tomorrow.
All right, great, thank you.
And number five, Mike.
So Madam Chair, through you, the Greater Attleboro Regional Transit Authority provides transportation for the town for elderly and disabled.
The door is locked.
Oh.
And has been locked, so I don't know.
Oh.
I just got locked out, so.
Oh, thank you for letting us know.
Thank you. For elderly and disabled members of the community, through the Council on Aging. And this is a service that they provide for us. There is a contract that we need to sign between the town and, and GATRA so that we can actually provide those services. It's something we do every year, apparently. I wasn't here last year, but this is something that is, is an annual thing. And at this juncture, I would, I would ask that the board vote to approve this contract and to instruct me to sign that contract on behalf of the town.
Any questions? I didn't have any questions either. So I would accept a motion to approve a contract between the town and GATRA, the Greater Attleboro Taunton Regional Transit Authority for transportation services and authorize the interim town administrator to execute, execute the contract on behalf of the town.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, no. I, I, I voted aye. Number six, Mike.
Madam Chair, through you, it's time for us to open the warrant for the.
Seems crazy.
Fall town meeting. I know, you just finished jury annual. To open the warrant for the annual town meeting and to set the dates for that meeting, I believe that you received, hopefully you received a calendar of events that need to happen. This is the first step in all of that. I get, given that, I had a staff meeting last week and kind of gave everybody a heads up that this was coming so they can start thinking about what they're going to need in the fall. But we can also, you know, discuss other things that the board would like in that regard. But I think at this point in time, what we need to do is, is vote to open the, vote the date of the, of the special town meeting and then we would vote to open the warrant.
Well, and it looks like November 12th is proposed. I looked at my personal calendar. I didn't look at a holiday calendar. Did somebody check on the, like, for some of the holidays that maybe we don't celebrate? Has that been confirmed?
Madam Chair, through you, I believe that Judith has done a.
Done a thorough.
Done a thorough job of, of looking at the calendar and making sure that all of the dates are, are appropriate.
All right. Does November 12th work for you?
I think I'm free that night.
You think you are?
Yeah.
Till very late into the night?
Yeah.
I'm free as well. Does that work?
I think so, yes.
Awesome. So I would entertain a motion to hold November special town meeting at King Philip Middle School on November 12th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 P.M.
So moved.
It is the day after Veterans Day, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
The day after what?
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day is November 11th.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think that has any.
Okay. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. And so we have a, so moved, we have a second?
Second.
And we have further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Then we also then have to open, it's so crazy to me. We have to open the warrant. So here we go. I would accept a motion to open the warrant for a special town meeting to be held on November 12th, 2025. And the warrant will close for that special town meeting on September 5th, 2025 at 6:00 P.M.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then just to piggyback on that, we had last, for our last town meeting, we had a pre-town meeting opportunity for our residents to ask questions about the warrant. We had gotten some feedback from folks that sometimes town meeting, there's conversation and, and people can bring their questions forward, but then the voting is kind of fast. So about a week before, we had a, a pre-town meeting for people to have an opportunity to ask any questions about items on the warrant. And so I would ask you to talk to the department heads because it was definitely an ask from them to come and find a date for us so we can publish that right away. Last time we gave people maybe a, a week's notice and it'd be nice to give them more than that. So we'll do a better job this time.
And do that.
And we got nice feedback. It was just not great attendance, partly because of the.
Short notice, yeah.
So let's not do short notice this time.
Fair enough.
I would also like to schedule a meeting with the advisory board in advance of the town meeting. I don't know if that's already something we do, but having served on the advisory board, I know there were a lot of questions about the budget and, you know, we, we met with the select board one time, but it was close to the town meeting. So if we can do it maybe a little bit more in advance.
Right, well, I don't, we, we don't do anything with the budget other than the capital expense at the fall town meeting though, right? The budget isn't discussed at all, so.
But I know that you discussed the.
The warrant articles.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I think that partnership could be stronger. So I think we could, we could do something like that. And we have made a commitment. I know I've talked to David about involving the advisory board in the budget process all the way along so it isn't something that shows up on their plate in, in April. And so we'll definitely involve them. And, but I think it's a good idea to at least invite them to a meeting once we are closer.
Yeah.
Way closer. November feels far away, but I'm sure I will blink my eyes and.
Madam Chair, it will come up on you as faster than you will.
So quickly. Awesome, thank you. And so number seven, search contracts.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. The town belongs to the Southeastern Regional Services Group. Southeastern Regional Services Group is a collaborative purchasing organization that allows for multiple towns to contract with various vendors and puts the cities and towns that belong to this group in a position where they have a better leverage to get pricing because it's a much larger purchasing than you're doing as an individual town. At this stage, there are two, three, three contracts that the board needs to approve. They're for various, various items. I'm sorry, there's one, two, three, four, five contracts. So first one is for office supplies with W.B. Mason. And that would be effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. It's a two-year contract with W.B. Mason. And again, it's for office supplies. We can do these one at a time if it makes it easier for you.
We usually.
Or do them all together.
Yeah, all together, yeah.
All right, so that's, so that's one. The second one is a contract for water sewer treatment chemicals. And that is with Borden and Remington Corp. And that contract will run June 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And that is for items two and six of their, the bid that went out. And then the other is for Roberts Chemical Company, Inc. And that was for item 13 on the, on the bid that was out from the Southeastern Regional Services Group. And then Shannon Chemical Corporation for item 16 on the bid. So if you could approve those three contracts, we can sign these. The contracts are standard contracts out of the Southeastern Regional Services Group, but they'll actually be between the town and those providers, not Southeastern Regional Services Group, I'm surprised. So they do all of the negotiating of the contracts and then the actual contract agreement is between the two. I've reviewed these contracts and from a 30B perspective, they're in order. So I'm confident that we have the right contracts here.
Thank you. So I would accept a motion to approve the surge contracts as printed in the agenda.
So moved.
Madam Chair, if you could, okay, you can, you can either sign these yourselves or you can authorize me to sign on behalf of the town.
I'll do a friendly amendment. We will authorize the interim town administrator to enter into these contracts on our behalf.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Second, so, a second or so moved?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then we can let Amanda know. Usually with the surge, like if, she can just share this electronically, we don't need to print all that out. Like for this surge, I trust that you've done our review for us, unless you want to see it all in print. But we can look at it electronically if we want to get into the weeds.
That's why.
Just to save the planet and to save Amanda.
I will, I will let Amanda know.
Excellent. And then we are on to discussion items. We need to talk about the select board schedule. I think we need to set up our regular meetings for the fall. We had talked about moving to Mondays because Mondays were better for folks. So we need to kind of set up a schedule for fall. And then I was hoping to also schedule the meeting where we're going to do the working meeting and talk about the budget process with Mike. And so the, the three of us and Mike can have a separate, just push up our sleeves, working meeting to do that. So, so we were going to do that one in August, right? I was thinking, I looked at a calendar. I was loosely thinking early August, like five, six or seven. It's a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. Then we could have that, that meeting concluded prior to our next select board meeting so we could report out to the community what our process was going to be. So that's what I was thinking. I don't know if there's a time. Last time we had a working meeting, haven't to do it.
I will be away on those dates.
Okay.
Not five, six or seven.
Now I need to get my phone. What time of day did we meet?
I think one.
Was it like 1:00?
Yeah.
Is that going to be?
It's fine for me. I just, those particular dates, I won't be there. I won't be here.
So our next select, I mean, it doesn't have to be done before the next select board meeting. I was hoping to, we were going to meet on the 11th. So why don't you suggest a day?
I can do Friday, the 8th. I don't know if you want to meet on Friday, but I can do Friday.
I can do that.
Yeah, yep.
Is it, does that work for you?
It's going to make it work, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. So Friday, the 8th at 1:00? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Then we'll say Friday, the 8th, 1:00. Kelly, can, you ask Amanda. Usually she checks at the library and we, we meet in that cool room, that schoolhouse room.
Yep.
And see if that space is available for us. It's nice to be kind of offsite. Excellent. And then if we do Monday meetings, you still prefer Mondays?
Yes.
Is Mondays where it's fine? Mondays are fine with me too. So we'll start on, if we meet on the 11th, do we want to meet on the 25th? Or do we want, the first is Labor Day? We don't want to do that. So do we want to start on the 25th? Or do we want to wait and start in earnest in September, on September 8th?
I think September.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Yeah.
Is that okay for you? So we'll start September 8th? And we'll just do every other Monday?
Yep. Unless Monday falls on holiday, then we can switch it, yeah.
Bump it to a Tuesday, or?
Or bump it to the
8th, 20th, so I'm looking, September 8th, September 22nd, October 6th, October 20th. Well, that's ahead of the Charles, I don't know. Just kidding. November 3rd is, I don't see, so November 3rd seems fine, the 17th, November 17th. We can kind of, does that get us far enough?
Yes. Madam Chair, that does.
I would like to ask, before the budget meeting, is it possible to get Clerg Gov up and running for us? Because that's what, the tool that we have, I believe the town has purchased license to use that, and that's what enables us to build a budget and also for all the residents, the advisory board, everyone in town to see the budget as we're building it, which I think is very important this year. So is it possible, Michael, to get that up and running before that?
Madam Chair, through you, I will speak with the finance director and find out what the status is of Clerg Gov and
And the budget book, right?
And the budget book.
And the budget book is what we'll need, those tools.
Last I checked, the budget book was in process, and we were looking at a week or so, week and a half, two weeks out.
Excellent.
So I will speak with Todd tomorrow morning.
Excellent. And then we have a tool, and I'm not super familiar with it, but it's a forecasting tool that allows us to, I think it was, I know that Todd worked really hard on it, it's really, it gives you the ability to put in some assumptions and then see the impact of that on the rest of the budget. So that might be a tool that would be useful to us as well. That already exists, I know. All right, so we have done, we have set our budget, our working meeting for the 8th at 1 o'clock, hopefully in the library, and we have set a regular meeting schedule.
Madam Chair, through you, I have one question for you. Does the board meet and go into session before town meeting, or do you just attend town meeting as
Oh, it's a posted meeting. It's a posted meeting, and so we
Do you actually, you actually gather?
Well
Last time, we didn't.
No, last time we didn't. Last time, we didn't open it. The town moderator opens the meeting.
I understand that. I was just curious as to whether or not, so certain, some communities, the, and I'll go back to my days in town meeting, as a school committee, we would meet prior to town meeting starting, and we would convene for the purpose of attending town meeting as a committee, just in case something came up on the floor that we needed to deal with. I'm just putting that out there, it's an option for you. If you've never done it in the past and you've not had a need for that, then you're probably okay.
We have usually met before town meeting. Usually that is, actually, November isn't, but it may, we do a reorg meeting, but in November, if there's any, like, it's a very short meeting because it's
Meeting on the 3rd.
Right. So we have met immediately before the meeting, but we've adjourned the meeting before town meeting. We've never stayed in session through town meeting. I don't know if that's not best practice, but to my knowledge, we haven't done that.
Madam Chair, through you, if you've never had a cause to do anything, then you'll be fine.
Yeah, we've never, we've never done that before. And this last town meeting, we actually met the day before instead of, instead of the day of, which is not typical for us. Okay. But for the pre-town meeting, we did advertise that as a posted meeting because we were, anytime two of us are in attendance, it's a
Correct.
So we were not out of compliance. Does that resolve our scheduling?
I believe so.
Awesome. So now we're on to general updates, starting with the town administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I completed two weeks here in my interim role. I've had an opportunity to meet with some of the people in town hall. My schedule being what it is and trying to keep my hours within, you know, 18 or so during the week, 18, 20 hours during the week, it has been a little challenging to get out and meet all of the people that I'd like to meet with. I did have an opportunity to hold a meeting with the department heads, and we had a chat in here, in this room, just to kind of do a, hi, this is who I am, and just kind of get an idea from all of them what they're up to, and I asked them to put together some information for me that I can share with you, certainly of sharing the, what they're happy with as far as accomplishments over the last year, and what they feel are going to be challenges for them going into the next year, or into fiscal '26, what kind of, what those challenges might look like. So it was a very good meeting. I enjoyed having a conversation with all those folks, and a couple of offices here, I've actually kind of just dropped in on and said hi, just spoken with some of the other folks that are at town hall. Hopefully, I'll get to get to all of the facilities and I'll get to meet as many people as I can in the next couple of weeks. But it's been a very, very interesting couple of weeks, just getting to know everybody and getting my legs under me with how the town operates. But so far, I've been, I've been met with, you know, open arms from the folks that are here, so.
Awesome, yeah, we have a great staff here.
You do. You do.
Excellent. And select board updates, any select board updates? I know you love to tell a story.
Oh, yeah.
Tais?
Not updates, but I just, before Justin left, we talked about establishing a communications committee to get information out to the town, and I think it got lost in the transition. So I did speak to Justin before he left. He said there is no official charter that we need to establish. We could, as a select board, appoint folks for the committee, or to the committee. I don't know, Mike, maybe if you want to double check on that, just to make sure before we formally establish this committee, but the purpose of the committee, as we talked about, would be to get information out to the community, to summarize information from the select board meetings, but also all of the other committees that are out there, and get it out to residents in a format other than social media, which, you know, we use social media, but there should be other channels of communication that we communicate to the residents on. So that was what we discussed as a board, we all agreed it was a good idea, and now we're just trying to figure out how do we actually go about establishing it.
And so do we solicit, should we solicit the community? If anybody's interested out there in the ether, please reach out to the select board, maybe through the select board's office. We would be very eager, and we could also seek out people who've done, I know there are some people who have done some communication, taken it up on their own, like John Griffin and Birch Duggan's Warf have done some really nice newsletters. We could also reach out, and there are some folks in our community who know everything, like Donna Jones seems to know so, so much. So maybe we could reach out to some folks who are across our community, but also open it up to anybody, all the, what did we decide?
The hundreds.
The hundreds of people out there watching us, anybody who's interested in participating in something like that and examining what is, I know from my time as principals, you do a newsletter, and then people don't read the newsletter, and then you do emails, and they're like, I get too many emails, and it's very hard to please everybody, but I think, I think the answer is a multi-pronged approach instead of a single-pronged approach, and so.
I hope the staff at the town administrator's office don't get overwhelmed with all these emails and people responding, yeah.
Who are eager to be on our community. So we can formally, maybe we could do a press release and say, we're establishing a communication committee, please reach out if you're interested. Is that easy?
Madam Chair, through you, it sounds like a communications thing, but we can certainly, we can certainly
Let's see if we can
Get something out there to everybody. You know, you have an opportunity right now because you have this forum.
Yes.
And I'm sure folks do watch. It's amazing how many people do watch these shows. But, you know, we can certainly
Well, we're eager to have you participate. Please reach out, and we'll formalize that. I think, thank you for bringing that up. Excellent.
Could I ask, have you heard anything, the update on the shelter?
Oh, that was on my list.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I have not. I have not heard what the status is of the shelter. I know that the target date is to close it down by the end of this month, but I'm not sure what that, what the status is of that.
I was going to speak to that briefly. I haven't heard anything newer than that.
I can reach out to the head guy down there and just see how it's progressing.
The last thing I heard is that they're working really hard to get to transition, there's way fewer people there now, and the few remaining people, they're working to transition them into permanent housing, and those who haven't been moved to permanent housing will be transferred to another site, I believe it's in Lowell.
Yep.
And so I think that that's the plan. I wanted to do some thank yous for that. Maybe we should wait until it's officially closed, but, so I'll wait, telling you to wait, I'll wait.
Yeah.
I wrote out my thank yous, but I'll wait till it's officially closed.
Okay.
And because there's a lot of people that made that successful in our community, so.
So we'll have to make it a shorter meeting so you can say your thank yous.
So I could say all my thank yous. We'll make a shorter agenda, just please send all those thank yous. But I believe it is closing, I haven't heard otherwise, that it is closing on June 31st. I mean, July 31st. July 31st, I think, is the official closing date. And then I wanted to take, I had the privilege this morning of going to the senior center, and they had a Boston cane ceremony, which is in days of yore. I have, actually, it started in August 2, 1909. The Boston Post gave out canes to communities to give to the oldest, sadly, the oldest man in their community, and so the cane was kept by the oldest man, and that person was recognized until he passed, and then it went on to the next oldest man. In 1930, they came to their sentence and included women in the situation, and that's a little editorializing on my part, but they included women in. And so today, we honored, and I'll read her proclamation, we honored Debbie, I want to get her name correctly, Debbie Redell Preston, who is the oldest member of Norfolk, the town of Norfolk. So I'm going to read the proclamation that Karen and her team put together for her. Whereas Debbie Redell Preston, am I saying that correctly, was born in Walpole in 1924 and moved to Norfolk as a young girl and has been a longtime resident of the town of Norfolk, Massachusetts, and resided on Rockwood Road with her parents and six brothers and sisters, and lives right next door now at Hillcrest Village. And whereas Debbie Redell Preston is being presented with a Norfolk Town Cane. Whereas Debbie Redell Preston married Harold and raised three children, a daughter Deborah, a daughter Joanne, and son Robert. And whereas Debbie Redell Preston worked as a cook and a baker at King Philip Middle School and King Philip High School for 21 years in the school's cafeteria. She says one of her secrets to living life to the fullest has been keeping active with her activities she has enjoyed, such as gardening for many years, and she was busy with many other activities as well. She especially enjoyed traveling with her husband Harold and on many adventures near and far. She has been crocheting and knitting since she was a young woman and still knits to this day, knits hats and blankets for several charitable organizations, and it keeps her very busy. One of her favorite activities each week is to go to our very own Norfolk Senior Center and play bingo on Mondays. She has loved being a grandmother and a great-grandmother and is a great-grandmother to many. And if you ask Debbie if she has any regrets, she will tell you her only regret is not seeing Alaska. She is a special lady indeed. Debbie Redell Preston has been an outstanding citizen of the Norfolk community. The Norfolk Council on Aging proclaimed Debbie Redell Preston as the oldest citizen in the town of Norfolk, and it recognized officially July 14, 2025, as Debbie Redell Preston Day. We encourage all citizens of our community to congratulate and celebrate with Debbie and her family. So I just wanted to acknowledge her, and pretty, pretty cool thing. And I had one last thing, and I'll be so fast, but we've been talking about communication and transparency, and trying to do this right. And so I thought most, what many towns and cities do is they start out the fiscal year with a state of the, the state of the state, or the state of the town, or the state of, so I'm working on a draft state of Norfolk, state of the town, and I'll keep it short for Kevin.
Very short, yeah.
I will keep it so short.
Under two minutes.
But I'm working with Andrew and NCTV to record it. We'll send it out as a link in case people want to see, but just kind of saying, this is where we're at, this is what we're really proud of, this is where we need to go, and these are the challenges ahead, because there are definitely challenges ahead. So in the interest of transparency and trying to start from the same place, I just wanted to let the board know I was working on that, and if it goes well, maybe that's a tradition that we can continue in the future. So that was that. And then I would entertain a warrant, a motion to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then the minutes that are listed in the agenda, Tais was not here, so it just means it needs to be you and I, so I don't see May 13 in the packet, so I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from April 29, May 7, and May, oh, I got to put on my glasses. May 7 and May 13.
Well, May 13 is not in the packet, right?
May 13, I didn't see it in mine.
It's not in mine.
I see April 22.
Madam Chair, that is an oversight, we will look into that. So if you would just approve the May 29 and May 7
All right.
Minutes at this meeting, we'll get the others at your next meeting.
Awesome. So, do you want to do it, or should I try?
I make a motion to approve the minute meetings for April 29, 2025, and May 7, 2025.
Second? Oh, you can't second because you weren't there? Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.